Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Brian Geezy.
President.
Like you said, President. Hey, Shrek. Time to hide. Yeah, I've got it. Just use the credit.
Okay, at this time, Stan, in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And virtue of character reading today.
A practice. Determination. You focus your energy and efforts on a task and stick with it until it is finished. Determination is using your willpower to do something when it isn't easy. You are determined to meet your goals even when it is hard or you are being tested. With determination, we make our dreams come true. You're practicing determination when you believe what you are doing is important, set goals for yourself, stay focused without being distracted, keep going if it gets difficult, ask for help when you need it, finish what you start. I am affirmation.
I am determined. I set goals and keep going until I achieve them. I get things done. I stay focused on my purpose.
Thank you. Determination's a good one for the board as we improve our work. Board of Education has established guidelines. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest communications around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. And at this time, I'd like to open the floor for any public comments. We're good. Okay, the first item up on the showcase is a CWSA update. Do we have an update?
Yes, that's me.
Yeah, well, welcome.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Nita Kirst. I just came on the CWSA board in May. So I'm still trying to figure it out and trying to figure out what my position is with it. So one thing I found out is, come to board me.
Well, thank you for joining.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for your service very much.
Uh, we just met last night. The first thing that came up was the writing of a grant for the school. And as we looked at it, it caused some good discussion and created some questions that Clint Rogers wrote down and then sent them over to Terry. And we did get a response from Terry on what this grant is about and what would it do for this, for the STEM school. And I think we would need to meet again to discuss what we now have learned about that grant. To apply for the grant, we would have to do it by the end of February. So we know we've got some work cut out for us there. The update from the one and a half instructors that we have, they are striving to keep good communication lines open between parents and the students. There are some parents who don't know how to check up on their student's progress. And so these teachers are going to now sort of test trial a program, one of the existing programs, and see if they can make it easier to handle and send out and get parents to read and understand and hopefully get better communication between parents and their students so that they know where their student is in the education process. Then when we talked with our finance person, we found out that we paid $750 for a project lead the way to be able to use that program. Only our one and a half instructors, neither one of them are trained in it. So here's some money that is not being used. So we have charged Clint Rogers to get going on this and find a way to get these instructors certified or have them gone through the process of learning how to teach it. And in the meantime, those students in the STEM program are sort of missing out. So what do we do? How do we find someone who can come in and lead or work with the students? So that's another agenda item that we're going to have to work through. So that's it.
Thank you very much. And we, again, very much appreciate your service. During our community discussions on the strategic plan development, we had a parent in the town of Rome that attended, and they had many, many good things to say about the quality of instruction and communication as a strength and reaching a child that, you know, the CWSA offered them something that worked for them. So it was really good feedback and they provided us some very good information. So it was.
So pass that on because that is important. They really were speaking highly of CWSA. Do you know when the next showcase is so we can get that out there?
I think it's September, January 18th. Is that right? 15th is a Monday.
The year before we know it.
Yeah.
Yes, it will.
What was the grant that you guys were researching?
I don't know the name of it.
Okay.
It's the, it's the, the state of Wisconsin's now been awarded 95 million federal dollars. So it's a continuation of what really got the charter school started.
Oh, okay.
So one of the ideas has been that they could write an expansion grant to expand the current school. And we had talked about going up, 912, but the council had also talked about, could we develop a feeder program, you know, at the earlier, in the year, earlier years, correct? So, yeah, so there's some stipulations and some regulations that we have to follow. And one of the big questions is staffing. So if you're going to do it, you have, probably would have to add some form of staffing, whether it be taking, you know, teachers away from other programs and placing them there or having them apply. So that's, I think, the biggest question.
Nita, could you just keep me in the loop on that, please?
Sure.
So I could be involved in the finance end of it and help you guys with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Does the grant help to pay for staffing or does it other stuff?
Yeah. Supplies, equipment, educational materials, if you had to reconstruct, but not construct. Yeah, school desks and that kind of thing.
Pretty much the same thing that we had when we first started.
It must, it sounds like it.
Thank you very much for attending our meeting tonight. Thank you. And Mr. Nifrat, Nick Fisher-Beth is our student representative and you're up on the agenda.
All right, thank you. As far as student council goes, Nacusa Scott Talent was scheduled to go on this past weekend. It was canceled due to lack of interest. Really, for next year, if they were to look to do it again, we just need to get the word out a little bit better, maybe open it up to more of a student showcase and then a, then more of a judge thing so there's a, there's not really a winner. It's more showcasing students' talents. So that's an idea for them next year to, to work toward. Uh, we're doing the Winter Spirit Week this week, which is just kind of getting kids in the mood for the holiday season and Christmas break and things like that. Other than that, we're looking forward to working with the school board to do a student forum. Hopefully, we're looking at second semester after finals, just because that's a rough time. So hopefully in February, we can do that on a Wednesday afternoon for early release, so 1:50 to 2:50. But again, collaborating with you guys on those ideas. And then also looking forward to just increasing the student voice with the school board in the future.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Nick.
Thank you for your input on the community meeting that we had this last week. That was really appreciated.
You know, the efforts that you put forth for Nacusa Scott Talent, you know, you gotta try things sometimes, you know, and, you know, for fundraising and it didn't work out, but, you know, you're gonna come up with something different and move ahead. So we want to thank you for all that.
Yeah, determinations.
Determinate. I know that you, I know that you put a lot of work into that. And I want to recognize you for that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we're looking at approval of the 2018-19 school calendar. We looked at this last month. So at this point, we're looking for approval. And this, we need a motion for approval of this one. Do we have a motion on the floor? Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We need to look at the date for the January board meeting. There's a conflict with the current date and the state school board conference. We're gonna probably look at moving it to the fourth Thursday, or fourth Tuesday, is that correct? Twenty-third. We'd be looking at, be looking at moving it to January 23rd. Does that work for everybody?
I think I would be out of town.
Would it be something you could maybe teleconference in if necessary?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope, that happens. It happens. It happens for everybody. I think we'd have a forum.
But as long as you have two.
Yep. Yep. I'll tell that about.
It's good for me.
Very good. And it's good for myself. So we're gonna schedule the meeting for January, for January 23rd at 6:30 PM. There's no need for a motion on that, I do not believe. Very good. Policy governance. As, on the calendar this month for policy governance is the results policy. The results policy deals with academic performance. And we have on the calendar, in November, we reviewed the language arts and in December, we're looking at reviewing the math. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Nathan Black.
All right. And with the board, I'm, today, about a week ago, I shared a document with the board reviewing pretty much, again, not just strictly math, but all aspects of, or we're talking about this similar to last month, through the lens of the state report card, on how we're doing in many of these areas. And so what I'd like to do today, and again, this is a long, you know, eight-page document of which we're gonna want to look at a few things today. This, I see as, again, as we've discussed, as a prelude to a longer, deeper discussion on these type of areas. But I'd like to invite, basically at the stage, I'm gonna show you some of the graphics on here, and I would invite your comments or questions after each one. Again, I'm not intended to be super in-depth, but how long we spend on this is clearly up to you.
And one of the things I did share with Nathan as we talked, the board retreat coming up, we can do a deeper dive if the board so chooses.
Right. One thing I think we need to maybe consider in this, with this policy, we may wanna identify those benchmarks that we're utilizing and document those benchmarks.
So let's talk about, here's where we are in terms of state report cards, fore exam, ACT, those in particular.
The measurables that you'd be using, and I'm thinking, you know, for, how do you wanna say, repeatability and consistency on those items that we're looking at.
Sure.
And I would, again, I think that that board retreat that we're looking at, scheduling in January, might be a good time to do that. But I might maybe have you think about that.
Look, we've got all the data right here, it would be fairly easy. And again, the, I would likely stick with the same format of talk, when we're talking about how we're doing at the, given the time, the nature of this meeting, we have time to look at the district as an overview, whereas something like that, we're, we have time to look building by building and various other things that those would entail.
What I, what I was kinda thinking, since we're looking at the English Language Arts in November and math in December, and with, I'd like to possibly do a board retreat every January, you know, and, you know, the timeliness of this would work quite well. I don't think, I think, like you say, you, everything you're doing, you, it's not gonna change, you know, those measurables. But if we could just get it written down, it might be a good, yep. Sorry to interrupt.
No, please do. It's your meeting.
Yep. But, yeah, you hit the highlights, big guy.
Well, let me, again.
Appreciate the work that you've done on this.
Please note, and just to explain what we're looking at, for purposes of comparability, now, there's a lot of comparables that we look at. For purpose of our discussion today, I'm looking at the South Central Conference. And so this is referring to Westfield, Nacusa, Watoma, Moston, Wisconsin, Dells, and Adams Friendship.
How are these going?
For each of the, you will see that we're doing a, there, a question arose about what are, not just where we at, but what are the trends over some time. So there's three years that are involved with each one of these. Let me just sort of identify for purposes of this, we are right here. We're the second one down on here in Nacusa. The first year is 2014, the next year is 2016. You asked where, what 2015 went. That was the year that no state report cards were issued due to the Badger, the legislature saying, due to the Badger exam, being one year we're exempting that year. And then this most current year, 2017, right below it. And so this is the overall state report card. As we noted last month, in 20, in 20, we made a large jump between 2014 to 2016 from meets improvements to significant, to exceeds expectations. And so meets expectations to exceeds expectations, you'll notice there was a very large jump. As we also discussed last, last week, we have gone backwards in the overall rating for purposes of that we are retooling. We're spending, we noticed trends that were going directions we weren't care for, and we noticed those, we, we, they're not here, but that we saw the same things on the Badger exam. And so starting, and we're talking specifically about math, so let me continue with that. As we're noticing needs to go ahead, that's just indicators that our math could improve from a more systemic approach. That we have, again, great math teachers, we have ones who put all kinds of work into various things, but we also have math being taught by differently grade to grade to grade, which teacher, students needed to learn new ways of doing math essentially every year in that process. One of the ways that we're taking for improvement is we are having a more systemic approach to way math is being taught. And in, we, we started piloting this in a couple different grades, in seventh grade and also in a couple, in a couple grades of the high school during last school year. And we're in our first year implementation of a new math program called College Preparatory Math, or CPM Math. It's a curriculum that's very highly vetted, is used by a quarter of the districts in the state and has very heavy, and one, probably, again, one of the biggest deciders for us was their professional development is second to none. They've spent a number, we spent four, four days during the summer, each of the math teachers, on learning how the system works. They've already attended, there's four during the school year, we've already attended two of those. And just being able to network and work with people from other districts and basically, learning how to do something new takes time, not just for students, but also for their teachers. And this, and as, the hope is, as we're, so reversing these trends is a matter of, we can't flip a switch on any of these. What we need to do is learn new ways of doing, and learning how to do things takes time. So that is what we're attributing the overall drop that we're gonna note quickly in the student achievement. But let me just note with all, even with that drop, I wanna know, and even with the drop from last year to this year, we are still leading the conference in the overall report card score.
Yeah, that's true.
And as we're looking at various comparables for this, yes, there are things that definitely need improvement. At the same time, let's shine the light on things that are going well and working with that. And because these, I would have to say, for what we're looking at, we're looking, we're gonna look at four indicators. One of them is student achievement, we're also gonna be looking at student growth, closing gaps, and as well as on-track readiness. The other, student achievement is sort of like, here is the absolute score that we're going. This would be the score of the football game. The other indicators like growth and closing gaps, those are your halftime reports. Those are things that you're learning about, if the score isn't going the direction you want, you make adjustments. And they're more early indicators as opposed to, and so the overall score for student achievement is what we call a lagging indicator. It takes longer to make a difference in those. And you can, it's hard to change, like the score of a football game, you can't change the direction that's going if you don't make your adjustments and see how well you're doing in certain, at other aspects of it. And so as, I don't mean to minimize our, the improvement that we're working to achieve at in student achievement, but how we know we're on the right track is those other track, is those other things as well. So we do need to look at all of these together, and that's where the overall report card comes in, that indicates that we are moving that direction.
Thank you.
So, any questions, comments, before we move to any of the, those subcategories?
According to that, we're doing pretty well.
We are doing well. Again, can we do better? Yes. And we're, and we're fully expecting to be back in the exceeds expectations next. We missed the cutoff by .6 this year.
.6% was the.
Well, point, well, out of 100 points, .6, right?
.6.
Yeah. Yeah, still .6%. And that will be somewhere that, and that certainly is right, and we're, we're right there on all these metrics. But everyone gets, the thing is, you look at each district, each district got to their overall in a different way. And we're just telling you the, the story of how we got there and where we're going. Okay, so starting out, let's go ahead and move down to the area, student achievement. Now, let me just note to how to read this, we are the gray right in here in Nacusa. There are two bars that you're gonna see. The first bar is math achievement, the second bar is English Language Arts achievement. If you look at the second bar briefly, you'll notice that actually, English Language Arts achievement has been steady over this period. We've made some changes and whatever else, but it's actually done up slightly over this period. What is, now, I'd like you to pay attention, do you see this little line right in between them? Because the first one is math, that tells you what direction the math scores are going across the conference. Notice any patterns? If you look at the lines up here, so this is Adams Friendship. This is Moston. This is Nacusa. This is Watoma. This is Westfield. And then there is Wisconsin Dells down here. Do you notice any patterns?
Regressing.
They're all regressing. Part of that is in nature is that in 2014, we were, the test being given was the WKCE and since then has been the FORWARD. The FORWARD is a much more rigorous test. And it's better aligned to the Common Core State Standards and a higher, so part of it is, what we're seeing in regression of math scores is happened to every, literally everybody in the conference. And as we're adjusting, now, some have larger adjustments to make than others. For example, if you look at Wisconsin Dells, you'll notice that they, their initial slide was really not all that much, and, but then they've had some additional things that they're working on it. But a lot of this is, as with anything, we welcome this feedback to let us know, how are we doing? And so when we started noticing that our, if you, let's go back to the Nacusa scores, you notice the big jump that we had was from 2014 to 2016, over that period, that's where the biggest drop off went. And as we saw that in the Badger, again, those numbers aren't here, but also in here, we're noticing, wait a minute, those are some areas that we need to start looking some adjustments. And so, start, and so this is for the 2015-16 school year, which is when we started noticing those areas. We started making adjustments in the form of a pilot last year, and we're more full-scale in those adjustments this year. So part of it is, as we're noting, and overall, the regression is due to math on this area. And so we needed different ways of doing that. Now, that said, a note is that you might ask, why are we focused? And let me just be specific about the changes and where they're happening. This year, we are starting the CPM math curriculum in grades six, seven, eight, and nine. Why not nine through 12, all at the same time? One note is that as, as we're making this change, we are moving away from, we have a curriculum sequence that was, and again, there's two different ways the curriculum sequence goes. One is a traditional curriculum sequence, which 90% of districts use, and then we use a modified. There are really benefits and strengths to each one. We made the decision as a district to go ahead and go remove and change to the traditional sequence primarily because we have the issue of, we have several transfer students who come into our district. And students who are transferring in, who are on a different sequence, will naturally have holes in their curriculum. And some of the issues that we're seeing in our reports is, we feel a degree, to, at least in some degree, to the people who are moving into our district, they're, they're gonna see things on the test that were never presented to them because they're presented at different times in different districts. Now, Grant, you're gonna get that anytime you transfer, but if you have different curriculum sequences, it's, it's that much stronger. So that's another change we made in the math area, is that we re-sequence the high school area for that. Again, I very much appreciate the work and the reasoning that has gone into the previous sequence that we had. But for meeting our needs and especially the, the profile of our district, we felt that that was a stronger choice, just moving forward for that. So as a result, though, we are only introducing one year of this at a time. So this year, it's at the high school of grade nine. The next year will be grade 10, nine and 10. The next year will be grade nine, 10, and 11.
And you mentioned our, our, our teachers are really to be, you know, respected for the work that they put into this and that the, the thought processes that they went through, you know, a very dynamic planning group and.
Yes.
You know, they, they're really looking at, I just, you know, I, I heard personally and saw personally that they were just looking at what they could do best for the students. And that's something to see that teamwork, and I'm sure you directed it.
Yes, well, I'm just noticing that here, we, these are teachers who, like, for example, I mentioned that we only have changed this at the high school in one grade level. All of the high school teachers have gone to all these training, to all these summer trainings and to be able to bring themselves up to speed to say, how can we make a group decision to work on this? In many cases, we have teachers who are doing things differently than they have for decades and, and giving, setting aside practices that they hold, that they, they have developed, which is not an easy thing. And we appreciate, and, but the professionalism and the work is just beyond, I'm just so pleased with it. I appreciate the, you know, that prioritization. And so simply put, on here, we're seeing the, to a certain degree, just an accumulation of, we are fully expecting these changes to be able to start shifting a little bit. Again, let, let's just caution, at the high school level, these change, they measure this at 11th grade year, ACT. So the changes we talked about are not going to be implemented for a couple of years yet. That said, we're making large changes at middle school and we should see movement based on that. You might also ask, okay, what about K through 5? Why aren't we making any changes on that front? Remember that in grades, grade six, teachers start to specialize more on, we have, a teacher will teach just math or English Language Arts or wherever else. Whereas in grades K through 5, all the teachers are teaching all the subjects. As we've, as we've noted, we are in the second year this year of changing the way that we're doing English Language Arts. And it is not really a good move to try and have teachers retool their entire way they do things in two different areas at the same time.
Which we've heard from teachers.
And not, and just for their own, for their own sanity, they'd be, it's better to be able to get good at one thing before moving over to the other. And so there are changes that we're gonna be looking at in future years of shifting K-5 math curricula, as we're seeing some changes that need to be made. But that said, we are, we're not imposing that on, we're basically wanting our teachers to grow and do excellent wherever they're at, and we can't do two tracks at the same time. So that's why we're making the changes, and that's the logic behind the sequencing that we're using.
But you wanna talk just a little bit how we're filling some of those, those gaps and holes at K-5 right now with?
Oh, yes, we are using other, we are using things, for example, at, I've got John right here, so, and you've heard too much of me real quick, but just talk really quick.
You did such a great job though, Nathan.
Want to talk about DreamBox really quick?
Sure, you know, over the years, we've had a, a couple of different things, but right now, we're using a, a tool called DreamBox, which is an opportunity for kids to engage in math and it helps them self-select and, or self-direct their learning more. So it fills in some of the, well, fills in the gaps in terms of what we're looking for on the Common Core State Standards for math. And so it's an opportunity for kids when they're, they're getting this instruction through our envisioned curriculum, which we've been in agreement, I'm thinking, is this like the seventh or eighth year or more?
We've still got a couple of years on our contract, but part of it is that the curriculum that we're using is, is good. It's solid. It could be improved. But what DreamBox does is it allows students, it meets, it basically differentiates, it gives, meets students where they're at and starts pushing them at different levels rather than just the full, everyone, one size fits all, it really starts pushing that out a little bit.
Is it on iPad or you can use a computer?
You can use it on any.
Any device?
Any browser. Any browser that works. Another thing I note that we've been doing some work on this, John and I have been working particularly over the last week to go ahead and create new opportunities for advanced math learners at Home Keepers, that we can create some additional ways for them to be able to get enrichment and acceleration or basically what, how to meet their needs where they're at. And so those are some things that have been sometime in the moving, and we're doing some additional work that we should be opening that up to. So again, there's, we aren't ignoring, we're not just walking away from that. We're doing things to be able to help create opportunities for people as we can, but there's only so much patching you can do where it's sometimes it's better to, you know, go ahead and build and buy a new house on one of those. And so as soon as we can afford the down payment in terms of time and resources, and those are our big, those are our biggest things, we're gonna be moving different directions, K-5 and math, that are complement, that are backwards planned, that set people increasingly up for success with what's happening 6-1. So.
Thank you, Nita. That's a very thorough explanation. Thank you, and that's a very thorough explanation. I, I just, I, I think we'll be able to post some of this information at the meeting in Dallas, you know, for the public to be able to, and, you know, I just, if the public has any questions regarding test scores, and, you know, feel free to, to contact the district, and we can really dig into those, because just looking at that original number doesn't tell you the whole story.
It doesn't, and let me gloss the other ones, if I may. Just, again, there's, let me just note that this next one is talking about growth. How fat, how much, now, this is a very interesting one. Basically, it says, it'll compare a student in, so, let's say third grade, and it'll take that same student and see how they did in fourth grade on the same test. And it'll then take that student's score and compare it to how much, according to a model they have, how much they should've grown. And it compares apples to apples. If a student is, if a student has a disability, say, for example, speech and language, it will compare it with other students with speech and language. It compares a student who is in certain, certain categories that sort of can match one way or the other. It'll match with identical people from the same. So, this is what's known as a value-added model. It's basically saying, how fast are we growing? So, here's one, I talked about halftime speeches and other adjustments we can make. If you want to go ahead and raise your test scores, people have to grow fast, more than a year's time. In less, in a, in a year's time, to be able to have those scores grow. And so, really, one of the numbers you really wanna look at and say, are, what are we doing to move the numbers? You need to look at the growth scores. Again, I'll draw your attention to this right here in the middle. In 2014, our goal, our growth was a bit below state average, relatively flat. 2016, it was final, top 10% of the state, where we went ahead and made some changes in the growth. This last year, that's cooled back down. This is actually a little, we're a tick above state average at this point. And with that, we're, that puts a second in the conference to Moston for growth scores. But, we saw it certainly up, and again, why did we grow less last year? We're putting new systems in place. We're doing different, especially ELA and those type of things, many of those scores is not as high. As you're, as you're putting new systems in place, the teachers are learning new ways to do things, and that's why we're, again, our decreased growth score is still solid. And, but, there's, but that is an area that we're gonna continue to keep an eye on growth, because if you want your overall scores to come up, you have to grow your way there. So, any questions about growth?
No, that makes sense, Nathan. Thank you.
Okay, next one on here. And this is one that's gotten a lot of discussion over the last little while, and so I wanted to spend a note on that. This is our closing-the-gap scores. This is basically, it measures if there are students who are, let's say, students with, with an economic disadvantage and without an economic disadvantage. How well do they match up? How, what are the, what are their scores? How much of a gap is there between those two groups? Or, you can take any number of things that they go ahead and put in there. You'll know, we have spent some ti, and by some discussion, we've spent very deliberately over the last several years of differentiate, way, reaching not just people who are struggling, but changing different ways that we're talking, we're trying to redo the way we think, so that everyone has a different way to learn things. We talked sometime at the meeting last Thursday about, for example, how the, for example, the math ways that we're doing is not just a matter of, here's new math lessons, but it's new ways of interaction that involve soft skills and group work, that are ways that are pushing everybody across the spectrum, not just one person. And so, I've had some people who, and so, again, notice, this has been a specific area of district focus, to be able to help people learn, to have different ways to breed. As people have more on-ramps and more ways to access the material, that, that those gaps will close. And you'll notice that we are the only group in this, in the, in our conference, whose scores have gone up every year. And this is just continually growing just more and more. Our current, our closing-the-gap scores right now places in the top quarter of the state for, for this particular category. Now, I bring this up, and I need to say this with a word of caution, because some people have interpreted, they said, well, if our top scores are going down and our bottom scores are going up, we're closing the gaps, right? We can be closing the gaps by having our top scores drop. And so, this should be perhaps discounted by a means. My, my response to those who would take, look at the data in this way, is I would say, come and see. Come and take a look at the methods that we're using to see to what degree that they are re-meeting, meeting everybody's across the spectrum's needs. We have, and again, there, in any given area, nothing's perfect, and as we're working at this, but the, the methods we're embracing, in English Language Arts, that would be the work, Reeders and Writers Workshop model. In math, it's the CPM approach, to go ahead and working with group work. Those type of areas, it's more, it's way more than just group work. I don't wanna put it, it's a lot of soft skills. It's a lot of negotiation. It's making sense of things instead of just learning the formula. But those processes are ones that push everybody where they need to be at given times. And part of this also is a matter of raising, as we're studying deliberately curriculum about what is the learning target? Not just, here's what we think happens at this grade, but what is the state standard? What's the national standard? What says here? How are we doing consistently be teaching people, higher, raising our game as far as what we're teaching? That's making a difference as well.
So, we're, we're providing tools that all the students can leverage to be successful?
Yes. And again, there'll be rolling pains on the way. We're, I can't say just because our scores are going up, that we can walk away and say, whoo, we got this down. By no means. But this is an indicator, are we moving the direct, and that's all this is. This is an indicator that we're moving the right direction. And we have, and I would say that our, the drop we've been seeing in our overall average scores have been due to, just part of it is retooling, part of it is changing demographics. It could be any number of things that might come in there. But the response, the question that we're always asking ourselves, it, there's, again, changes that happen in every industry. The question is really how we're responding to it. And these are indicators that we're taking the right paths, that are sustainable, to, for, that are good indicators that future growth will continue along these lines.
It'd be fair to say that if you had not seen the results in these numbers, our scores would have probably been par.
And, but, and, you know, there's never one thing that we can put into here. What are some, but, all of this is on the back, we've, we've done a lot of work with co-teaching. We've done a lot of work with teachers being able to learn how to differentiate and teach in different ways. We've done a lot of support with, you know, for example, the before and after-school program, has certainly provided support. Do we know any one thing that we've done that we can, we can guess, especially since, as it's been an area of focus, we tend to get better at this? And we're, we're guessing that those are coming as a result of it, but we're expecting to see those efforts pay off also. We've got, now that we've got the early indicators, you're right, that the, that the lagging indicators will then start turning.
But it's, it's, it's like turning a big ship. You're not gonna do it fast?
And if you do do it fast, it's not sustainable, and it's not really. Anytime you see a big jump, my always question is, what's next year look like?
Yeah, that's so true.
Okay, and our last one, just, this is a quick toss-away. This is an area that we are, again, leading the conference in, and has been, long been a strength, our, our readiness. This is graduation rates. This is looking at key times of transition, like, for example, third grade English and eighth grade math, as people are making transitions from one level to the others. In all the areas, we're leading the conference, and we have done so consistently. And so, this has been a, a strength of, and again, let's talk about the effort that's been put in by the high school counseling department to make sure, reaching out to students who are in trouble. Let's talk about the academy work that's being done by Ann Lepek and others, to be able to help provide opportunities. Let's talk about the outreach. Certainly, our district administrator is very involved in this process. There's a lot of different areas that people have been doing, but they've been doing for several years, so they're probably not getting as much discussion about it. Because it's just, we've gotten used to, that's our way of doing business. And it's continued to pay off for us. So, anyways, that is the, overall, the areas. We're talking about math in terms of, and math achievement impacts all of those. I'm those sorts of the two main they're looking at. There's other things that came into play, but that overall, I have to say, is where we're at right now. Now, the further unpacking, what next steps are, and other, please also bring other questions that you have to us. And with, and again, if any member of the viewing public wants to know more about this and have a discussion about, and, and most importantly, to see for themselves, not just data, but what are we doing, and to be able to have some things. We'd love to be able to work together with people.
Thank you, Nathan. Very thorough. Yes, very thorough. Good, good. Okay, at this time, we are, you know, as a results policy, this is, you know, we have to look at the academic performance on the math as presented. Motion on the floor to accept the R2 academic performance math. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we are on to the consent agenda. We have one resignation.
Would you like to say a few minutes?
This resignation came from, you know, a very hard-to-seem...
You know, it wasn't anything against the district or things like that. It was due to more, due to some personal reasons. She has been a wonderful speech and language path, and we're very sad to see her go. But we wish her all the best. She's staying in the area and going to a nursing home in Wisconsin Rapids to work with some elderly staff with some speech and language needs. So...
We thank her very much for her service and wish her well. Very good. Donations? Would you like to read the donations, Mr. Chirrell? Why don't we go to Mr. Smith today?
Okay, we have Kimberly Buzz, is that right?
Correct.
Donated $170 to the lunch program from her 31 fundraiser event. Backpack for Kids with Matthew and Julia Wright donating $75. Beth's Lutheran Church, $50. Sacred Heart Collections, $140. Terry Anderson selected the following donations for school supplies for Christmas. Charles and Carol Bus...
BIC.
BIC, $100. Rome Fire EMS, $250. Nacusa Lions, $250. Beth's Lutheran Church, $250. Sand Valley Golf Resort, $250. Nacusa Port Edward State Bank, $500. Lake Arrowhead Association, $250. I wanna thank all of these people for their generous donations.
Very generous, and, you know, Terry, for taking the time to, to go to those different, different people. It's the time of year for giving, and people certainly did. So, thank you very much. Other items on the consent agenda, we have the board minister's report check register. One thing, should we, can I lend that, the auditor's report that we had? Is that, that's in the consent agenda, correct?
No, that'll be presented in January.
January, okay. Very good. I'm looking for a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Someone?
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, future meetings and agenda items. One of the, one important thing that we've identified is that we have scheduled a board retreat, and we'd like to do it in January on a Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM. And the general idea is that we, we'd spend some time with administration, but then, you know, have a breakout where it's just the board itself, by working just with the board, and then having admin, you know, possibly Carrie, come back and close out the day. There's some very, you know, some big things that we as a board need, you know, we need to really work on. I know that time is precious, but, you know, if we can't, you know, if we can't get any work we're gonna be looking at, probably middle to late January, based upon the state trust convention and other things. But are, are you prepared to try to set up a date tonight? Or would you like Diana to work on just setting something up?
I know what doesn't work for me.
Okay.
January 6th and January 20th. That's an option.
So, what's the, the second Saturday?
13th and 27th, when we're, two Saturdays.
Should we try for the 13th? You know, the 27th, let's go to the 27th, because I think we need to pair up an agenda and, and make sure that we have a reduction or on a look that we wanna accomplish. And that time will be upon us before we know it.
If we go to the 13th, yeah.
Are you...
No, you said, if, if we do the 13th, that's gonna come up.
Too fast.
Too fast, yeah. If we go to the 27th, we'll have time to really...
Final.
The Lions have been called, but Lions, I can find a replacement. Minister's man could fill in. Well, you might want, you might need to be there, too.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna technically schedule it for the 27th of January. I wanna thank everybody. And at this, we gotta remember that we've changed the meeting date for the month of January to the 23rd.
So, you're saying 9 to 3, right?
9 to 3 on Saturday. That is correct. And vocation to be determined. And so, remind me again, should you want the admin team there for like a half the day, half the session? I'm thinking for maybe two hours in the morning, and, you know...
Like 9 to 11?
9 to 11, and the board breakout from 11 to 2, or 11 to 2:30. And then, come back together and have a report out, essentially.
So, just me come back at 2:30?
Yeah. That's the initial.
Okay.
You know, and, and frankly, you know, from an admin, you're, you know, I think if there's any information that we require, I'd, I'd rather not tie up our administrators. Their time is very valuable. They put in many hours during the week. If in the process of developing the agenda, we identify specific areas where we might need help, maybe we can reach out. But we wanna respect our administrators' time. You're stuck with this.
I can sneak over to a little thing in the green, as we stay in town.
Okay, that concludes the business for this evening. We don't need to do any approvals on this.
Nope.
Very good. Okay, any other business? Comments?
Are there any other, other items we need to add for future board work? Do we know what?
Well, I think the, you know, only I...
Other jet items?
Not, not specifically at this time. You know, what, what work grows out of the strategic planning process that we've been engaged in. We've completed three meetings with the public, two with staff. We have one more remaining with staff. And we also had a, had a board forum last week, Thursday, that there's gonna be some, some data coming out of, so we don't, that may develop into, you know, some future meetings. I wanna thank the individual that showed up to the board forum last week, Thursday. We certainly, we certainly, you know, wanna see this open communication, and, and not just once a year, once every five years, but we hope to do it quarterly. But we want more than 15, 20 people. We wanna, we wanna see some involvement there. And maybe we can think of an exciting way to get people there. You know, celebrating, you know?
What'd you say?
Dinner.
Dinner, yeah. You know, I think we can maybe identify maybe a student program or, or something that celebrate in conjunction with that. Maybe we can do it in line with other events within the district. But we'll brainstorm that. But no, no other business at this point. Looking for motion to adjourn? Someone?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.